I am so glad to be here. You guys are rock star Eagle Forum chapter. We've gotten to Dallas. I have always been extremely excited about this chapter because you do a lot, you get a lot of good people elected, and you guys are very active. I know some of you are Tea Party too, and I just really appreciate what you all have done for this area. So just to start, if you want to do the next slide, I use slides kind of to remind me and try to keep me on track. Eagle Forum, for those of you who aren't longtime Eagles, was started by Phyllis Schlaxley. She was a brilliant woman, but her main thing was to be a dedicated wife, housewife, and mother. Probably "mother" is before "housewife," but everywhere she spoke, in front of presidents, in front of great big deals in D.C., she always thanked her husband for allowing her to be there. I mean, just as traditional as you get, as smart as they get, if you read anything she wrote back from the '70s on, some of them are still coming true. She said that if this happened, this was going to happen. We would have men in women's prisons. She predicted that. She predicted where the gay marriage issue would go. She was very, very smart, and life was her passion. So she got involved with trying to kill the ERA, which is her signature. She killed the ERA, or equal rights amendment. When that was out, Texas had signed it right away. We're trying to do a little work to... We'll need your phone calls when we get to that. We're trying to re-insist that by speech via our legislative body that our call is dead. It expired, and it is dead, and Congress needs to know that and recognize it. But she took that on because of her love of the issue of life and precious babies in the womb. She knew that what the left is going to do with the ERA is say, "Men can't get pregnant." So the federal government owes, like the left believes, owes equality to women that they don't have to be pregnant. They've had to change their talking points if this comes around again because now they don't say, "Men can't get pregnant," which is just insanity. But not everybody can get pregnant. And so this would federalize abortion. As you know, with Roe overturned, they desperately need to federalize abortion. So they're trying to bring this back and do it. So anyway, Phyllis died after endorsing Trump in 2016. She did not get to see him be president, but she was also president for getting Reagan, the nomination of the Republican Party. She was a grassroots of grassroots people. And we miss her, we're sorry, but her reading is still good. So if you read her old stuff, it is still appropriate. So special session is called for a lot of reasons. And of course, the tragic flooding, they need to do that. Redistricting, this was perfect timing to try to handle that. But it's a lot about, number one, bills that our governor killed, that the body and the people said, "We want these to pass." So some of those are coming back up again. But also the things that were ignored or killed, we did not get a lot in elections. That's not even really on the special session except for giving the attorney general his power to be able to prosecute. We desperately, you all know that, we desperately need to have that back. There's all kinds of arguments that he never really had it, but elections impact all of us and impacts our entire state. And so they can't let these district attorneys let things go. And actually, they're so silly to do that because it disenfranchises even their own voters. Nobody wants to think their vote is stolen ever. None of us ever want to think somebody overrode our vote, changed our vote, stole our vote, stole a vote. So anyway, life had come back because they didn't get that accomplished. Taxpayer issues, there are some of those on there. And privacy for women, the floods, we're watching that. I actually have Terry Hall and some of her family staying at my house right now. That's another reason why I was in Dallas today. But she lives just a few acres away from the river. And they did not get water in their yard. But she was telling me things that I just didn't know. That the water wasn't just... We picture it rising higher and higher and flowing. Because the river curved so much, it was sloshing like a wave pool and then hitting the banks or the walls or whatever was there and sloshing back. And that's why there was so much violence to the trees and the parks. But she points out some things. So we've got government trying to fix what already happened, number one. There can always be lessons learned. But she talked about, you know, everybody's like, "We didn't get the limes to evacuate." She explains, "Most people in her area would have evacuated on what they call the highway, but the road that runs alongside the river, that was flooded, that was where the water was coming up, you know, an inch or two a minute at some points." In her area of Kerrville, they have still mattresses and psycho streets that somehow survive 50-something feet in the air. They have a high watermark there, 50, 60. So this, you know, clearly, I think that weather manipulation is wild. But you know, so I think they're doing a good job of what went wrong, what can we learn? What we want to watch for is, are you growing government? Are you taking from people? We don't want them to grow government any more than absolutely necessary in these issues. People do need to be responsible to do their job well. So we fire people who don't do their job well, you know, either through elections or whatever. But that community, all up and down the river, are concerned about government taking and now state controlling of too much of what has been their community. A lot of them are generations there. So, you know, I just feel like I want to throw out, you know, that is something we should probably watch. So taxpayer, I gotta grab something. Taxpayer funding lobbying is always... Where's my glasses? Am I wearing them? Everybody does that, not just me, not just... Okay. That's been heard, it has asked me 12. Last I looked, the House has not even assigned a committee. Now, they may have. I was hitting that out yesterday, catching up today. But the House is not doing their job. Throughout, through session, up here, they were in my hand. I've got two. So through session, that both the House and the Senate killed the bills. And that's unusual. It's usually the House that gets them very, very slowly from calendar and puts them on the calendar that lets them be at the bottom of the pile. And things don't happen. But this time, we had both, which is a problem and disconcerting. But the Senate has been moving through, even before the Democrats left, to hear bills because that's what they're there to do. So we appreciate that with the Senate. For those who, I just realize as I'm speaking, some people don't understand that banning taxpayer funding lobbying does not get rid of all lobbyists. And I would be happy to get rid of all lobbyists, but that's not what it does. It gets rid of the lobbyists that your taxes pay to go down there and get your taxes raised, you know, effectively. That's what they want to get rid of. It is not fair. It is not fair to you to take your money and use it to take more of your money. And that's the general thing that goes on with taxpayer funding lobbying. Or it might be just against you, things you don't like. It might be something you voted down as a community, and they still want it, and they're trying to do a go-around or get funding. So anyway, it's always used against the people in the community, almost always. They will make arguments otherwise, but that's where we see it done the most. And so we do hope that'll pass. The Republican Party members want that passed. They've asked for it for a long time. But will it? Because our Democrats are gone. I mean, we don't know. We're all waiting. I think a lot more people will be watching the livestream online tomorrow to see, you know, who's coming back and following the news. I don't know that we'll end up with a productive session, whether they come back or not. I think we're going to end up with another one, which gets exhausting for our elected officials, staff, and people like me who are volunteering their time to be down there and fight for this stuff. But so we're not sure. But I appreciate that the Senate has heard that one. Not a lot of opposition this time. And I don't know if that's because they know the House is not going to be looking at it. So the life issue, the, I think it was the... I forget now. If the House or Senate heard the bill. But we've got to stop the abortion pills. With the abortion pills out there, babies are just dying in almost the same amount of abortions that were before. P and girls, women are sold that this is easier and simple and safer, and it is not. The FDA put out stats that would generally indicate one in 200 women have a problem with these, but the number is 22 times that. It's almost 1% of women have some kind of real problem after one of these abortions. They see their baby in a lot of cases. They weren't expecting that. If they had a tubal pregnancy and didn't know it, many of them never have seen a doctor. There are people who have had a baby die in their womb that turned out to be 20 weeks, 30 weeks because they took the pills not knowing how pregnant they were or not admitting how pregnant they were, never saw a doctor to confirm gestational age of this human being. And that is dangerous for them, devastating. Some of them won't have children, you know, after what their body goes through from this. So we want to stop those. We have trouble with the federal laws involving mail. And mail, and mail getting to be sent. We don't have that issue with drugs. You can't bring drugs across state lines. But this is a drug. It's a drug that kills a human. So some reps had some good ideas last time. There are, Steve Toth has one of the bills filed for this. He probably wouldn't get his heard because they gave it a higher number and they gave, you know, an anointed one a lower number. But we appreciate that people are filing these bills and trying to figure out, there are some bills with other ideas and ways. During the session, Oliverson, Dr. Oliverson did a bill that would change the scheduling of this medicine so that you can't take your prescription out of state and get it filled. Or somebody out of state can't give a Texan his medicine. So there's little things that a lot of them are trying to do. There are good people down there that are thinking through this issue. And so that is supposed to be on the hearing, on the schedule, and we're not seeing anything yet done with that, although there was supposed to be a Senate bill filed today. So dignity in private spaces for women and girls. That one had a hearing. Did anybody watch that hearing? It was Monday, and the left came out in droves. We didn't see a lot of reaction on social media, calling them to come. They were working it behind the scenes, and they did come out. Their arguments are, first of all, like, "Men this tall and this big saying, 'I'm going in women's bathrooms all the time, and nobody's afraid of me,' you know, in his dress." And, you know, "He's not sleeping for me because I don't want him in my bathroom or my dressing room or a shower or a locker room or a hotel room." But they also were trying to make the claim of, "Well, the easy answer is just unisex bathroom." I mean, you know, where it's just one person in there at a time. That creates so many more problems. And as a female, I'm sorry, guys, if I don't want to go in your bathroom and I go on my, you know, come in a unisex bathroom and use it before me because I don't want to touch the toilet seat to put it down, and I don't want to touch the door and not kid you, maybe I'd wash your hands. I mean, there, and she's like, "I don't want her in front of the toilet because my shoes are going to touch them." They go in my car, and then they drop something, and I pick it up. You know, there are just reasons that women's spaces, men's spaces work well. And these guys come down and they say they can be us, and they are us, and they can think like us. But I think every man in this room who's married knows he does not think like his wife. She does not think like him. So this does not hold true. A man cannot say he's a woman, be a woman, know how we feel, how we think, what mortifies us, which would be undressing in front of a stranger man. I mean, that just, that mortifies us, and we don't want to be exposed. And so they look crazy when they come and testify. And of course, the Senate did immediately vote this bill onward to the House. So we appreciate that. But the left wants to say, "Well, we made our case. Look how many of us were here." And we did have a Texas Eagle Forum person down there for us who testified in favor of the bill. But we need our voices. And that's why we send out alerts, and that's why we work on late into the night because we need you to just make a quick call to your senator and say, "I support this," this word to the committee members so that they can hear. They can add up all the voices that they hear. That is how we get conservative things done now at the Capitol. So, and I'm just going to kind of race through some of these. There are so many bills on property taxes. I stopped reading some of them because they're little things. You know, I haven't found one that's like the glorious "Save All Bill." One of the problems is we've got Republicans running around thinking they want to get rid of all property taxes. But I think we have to consider, if you take away all my property taxes, you're taking away the hospital district, my county, my city. I get school because if the state SBME, as a, you know, state-elected body, is controlling that, then, you know, then it makes maybe more sense that some ISB money and court cases and such, that ISB money can go to schools. But do I want my state government ushering in how much money Dallas gets? You, you know, Montgomery County for your county stuff? Who's fair on this? How do they decide who gets what? How do they, you know, so we have to think through that more, and I think it's a very complicated issue. We're focused mostly on family issues. We say, "What does God say? What does the Bible say? You know, what does God say? What does our Constitution say? And where do we go from here? How do we keep this country more in the guise of what our founders, you know, wanted it to be?" So we watch for things that are growing government in big ways. And I just think, you know, we have to be careful not to grow our state government. So I've not read a lot of those. They're not hearing any of them. They've not been assigned to committees. So as of right now, nothing's probably going to happen. They did hear SB 11 in the Senate, and that is giving Paxton the ability to prosecute election crimes. We'll hope that the House will get to take this up. Islam is not on the call, but Islam is rising in Texas. You guys aren't terribly far, I believe, from some hot spots. It is something that is really concerning. Dallas and the whole Dallas-Fort Worth area woke up because we have several of these communities that are trying to basically be their own government within a government. And I've studied enough of this. I helped Tracy Bradford, when she was president, work against, work for, to pass American law for American courts, which the goal was to protect women in divorce court because if they get sent over to an Islamic judge or a court of three who would sit in judgment of their marriage, her testimony counts like a quarter of a man's testimony. She loses her children when they turn six. She, there's several things. Oh, she can't go out without an escort, depending on, you know, what community she's living in. And so those aren't constitutionally really allowed to just have hard test rules on this stuff that are opposed to the rules of our state. And so we're concerned about things like that. We are concerned about what the Sharia law, which does not match our constitutional rights and privileges, that people would be sitting under those rules. Will they educate girls? In a lot of Islamic countries, when they get really strict, they don't educate girls, they circumcise girls. They can hit their wife, they can beat them after two mornings. So for women, it's definitely not a good gig. But the prayer calls at 5:00 in the morning. If our God, the God, is calling us to pray at 5:00 in the morning, let's go pray. But I don't want a false God's...
Amen.
...for whatever they're singing out. I don't like that waking me up. And trying to, you know, get my community to say, "Oh, it's beautiful." It's, you know, it's trying, they're trying to acclimate and be part of our community, and we have to be careful about that. The big one, THC, marijuana, cannabis, that's the big one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip to the screen, two slides. So SB 3 came about because in 2019, Texas decided, "We need hemp." I was at the platform committee meetings. I was not on platform at that time. But these lobbyists were there trying to say, "This is about rope, fiber, you know, industrial product for Texas." But what it was really about, you can't see it, low THC, under .3. That's what hemp is. That defines the hemp plant. It is a marijuana/cannabis plant. But the plant, the plant called the marijuana plant has actual high THC content. Out of this, they make high content. But legally, this number is a weight of thing according to the product that it's in. So if you have little gummies in a jar, a gummy, just, you know, like a little vitamin one that you would take, it can contain 15 grams of THC. Any chart graph, you know, that these stores put out, "How much should I dose myself?" Would tell you, if you've never used, five is going to get you high. If you use a lot, 10, 15, 20, there are people who use more than that. But there are consequences to that for a lot of people. There are some family groups in Texas that are not taking a stand on this. We cannot not take a stand on this. It is, it's not a liberty thing. They want to call this liberty, "To do what I want to do in my home." I can't afford to fix the health issues that come out of this. I can't afford it. We can't afford people we know and love getting in car accidents with somebody who's high on marijuana and cannot be properly tested to know that that's why they were driving bad. AAA does all kinds of testing and surveys and things on road issues and accidents. And they have shown that clearly marijuana drivers do not think they're impaired, and they're as impaired as hell. So, you know, they don't think they are. So one of the, one of the biggest, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to this one that says, you're gonna skip two. Psychosis and psychotic rates. High marijuana content, but even in some cases, low content, can set off mental illness that you cannot get rid of. People will say, "We're using this to stay away from the pharmaceutical companies." I get staying away from pharmaceutical companies, but guess what? Some of them invest in marijuana. Why? Because a brain that has had a psychotic episode or has actually had a psychotic rate needs medicine at the tune of $1,000 to $2,000 of co-pays per month to stay stable. It is really, really difficult. I have a nephew who's almost 30 years old, 40 years old. He is almost 40 now. He used THC at Baylor during a party in his apartment. We didn't know what it was at first, but his apartment got destroyed. Food smeared, refrigerator tipped over, furniture broken. He was kicked out of school. They took him home. He went into a psych ward. He had used strong content. You don't always know the content, strong content marijuana. He is still living at a home. You're paying for Social Security disability for him. He cannot work because he can't do loud noises. He did get a degree at, you know, from a local college, and I'm glad, but he can't work, you know? So he spent money at a Texas-funded university to get a degree that he can't even use. And he is right now, he went off his medicines. Men don't like the medicines because they, they do some physical things to their body. It's hard on the body, and you're kind of tired and wiped out when you're on the... He went off, and he is now in an extended, he didn't use marijuana. Again, he's just in this extended psychotic episode. We get weird, weird texts from his mother's phone that are from him. Bible verses that are fake. He'll do a real Bible verse, and then in all caps, "FAKE", you know, calling out your sin and damnation. There are things that aren't in the Bible. You know, it's a mess, it's hard. Family can't leave him alone, and he's almost 40 years old. So I want to read to you, this is a little bit hard, but I want to read to you a psychotic episode. I may start skipping because it's long. This is a gentleman who, in January 2023, used THC for the second time. He was not a longtime user. Longtime users have severely more chances of this, but here's his, what he remembers. "I didn't feel too bad for the first 5 to 10 minutes, but soon after, all hell would break loose. My girlfriend and I got the marijuana from a shop. I didn't think too much about the THC content. Honestly, to this day, I don't know how strong it was, but I know it wasn't what I was expecting. After the initial 10 minutes, I felt an extreme feeling of paranoia, and my mental psyche was starting to crack. I forgot where I was and even who my girlfriend was at the time. I lost all concept of time, couldn't tell if I'd been high for a couple of minutes, hours, or even days. That's when the panic and terror started to set in. I began to look for my girlfriend. I couldn't find her for brief periods. I walked circles in my home, helping to find anyone who could help me. And then suddenly, I started having hallucinations about my deployment in the Middle East. I thought I had been transported back to Afghanistan and was reliving all the horror and death I saw during my time there. I experienced auditory hallucinations that I thought were demons tormenting me. The voices said that I had died and was in hell, and I would continue on this path for all eternity." Sounds like hell. "I don't know how long this lasted, maybe 30 minutes, but it felt like forever. I was going up and down my stairs and physically felt like I was being attacked and thrown around. Then I remember lying on the couch with my girlfriend, and I couldn't remember how I got there, but it felt like I was heading back to my personal cell in a second. My girlfriend was trying to help me understand that all I had done was was read, and that everything was going to be okay. But I thought she was lying because she knew I was still in hell. So he's mixed up, he's not in reality, and he's, you know, his brain is not focusing or functioning. After trying to calm him down, my girlfriends went to let the dogs out on the patio for a bathroom break, but they got into a fight in the dining room before she could let them out. One dog weighed 100 pounds, the other 65. The larger dog latched onto the other one's throat and wouldn't let go. I jumped on top of it and tried to pry the mouth open, but it just bit down harder. Then I heard the TV laughing at me. It was saying, 'This is really funny because I'm in hell, and I never laughed.'" After that, I don't remember a lot because I felt like I just got transported back to hell. Within that second, I started seeing demons in my home. The smell of blood was everywhere. I felt my body get thrashed and tossed around, again and again, hearing laughing from all these demons everywhere. Then all of a sudden, I was back in the dining room with a gun in my hand. I remembered screaming for my girlfriend, and the TV started to laugh at me again. It was saying that I killed everyone. I started to cry and said that wasn't true, and they told me to look around for myself if I didn't believe them. That's when I noticed the blood everywhere. I couldn't even find my dogs, but I kept hearing the sound of bone crunching, like someone was eating something. The TV laughed even harder, saying that the dogs were being eaten by the demons. They had set forth, and I would be next. I started running around my house with the gun in my hand, saying, 'This couldn't be true.' And I started thinking, "Maybe this wasn't held in a nightmare and I just had to wake up." Then my phone rang, and it was the police department, asking me to surrender myself and put my gun away. That's when I noticed the flashing lights. I headed towards the door with the gun drawn. Then I saw red lasers on my chest. I thought, "This is my way out of hell." I started, if I started shooting at the police, then they would have to fire back and kill me. So I would finally wake up from this nightmare. As I started to raise my weapon again, with the intention of shooting, my phone rang again. It was my girlfriend's mom on the phone. She said to follow the police officer's direction, and everything would be okay. And for some reason, I remember I decided to trust her, that her voice brought me peace. So I got rid of my gun and walked out on my driveway where they arrested me. So then he's starting to see the police, and he's seeing their light armored vehicle in his garage, you know, more imagining. He says, so they arrested him. He kept having hallucinations until they let him out of jail and put him at the hospital. And he then thought that he was thinking all the jailers were people in Afghanistan. But he says, "I continued to have..." Let's see, later, I found out what really happened. "After I tried pulling the dogs apart and failed, I went and grabbed my gun. I shot both my..." both my dogs and my girlfriend. One of my dogs survived, the other did not, his girlfriend did survive." Um, he said, "With the support of, his, his support system and a dying love of his girlfriend and family, he's, he's moving forward. Um, he's learning with his girlfriend, she's helping him, um, more about marijuana and its potential effects, like cannabis-induced psychosis, and especially how it affects people who have a history of PTSD." Javante Hill, veteran and resident of Colorado. These things are real, um, and they're horrible, and they sound demonic, probably because they are demonic, and I just pray Jesus right now, don't let us hear, hear about demons and all that, and have them know they have any space in this place, because they don't, we love you, Jesus, and we want good for our veterans. Uh, we want good for them. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that when you, having heard this psychotic episode, when you see news headlines, you're going to see psychosis everywhere. Um, I got one just the other day, girl walked six, woman walked sixteen miles to kill her dad, she was there, she was having hallucinations, he ended up escaping, um, they did get her, uh, it's, that, it's so clearly psychosis, um, over and over. The New York shooter, the New York shooter had marijuana in his car, CNN reported that, but you know what CNN added? They're like, oh, he's got this magazine and this gun and this ammo and this paperwork, oh, and he has marijuana, but that's probably for migrants. That's what CNN.
Someone wants to be scared?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, when they went into his home, uh, that home, he had antipsychotic medications. You know, he's, he's a guy who is struggling with psychosis, and he went in and shot up a building in New York. Chris Kyle, and you have a little field, you guys will know where Chris Kyle, American Sniper, they were killed by a veteran, they were trying to help, he had juice popped that morning with his sister. Um, he heard them in his mind, talking about him and making fun of him, so he shot him both in the bath and killed them. Uh, the Uvalde shooter, a New York Times reporter reported early on that he went in, she went in, it was late, and talked to the people who worked with this boy at Wendy's, and they said, you know, his biggest issue was anger at his mom and his grandmother for trying to stop him from smoking weed or using marijuana. Um, so, it just, it continues, it's here, it is dangerous. Um, their medications are dangerous, they have to end up on, most of them end up on, on government assistance and programs, and we can't afford this. But when I'm in Austin, I also can't afford to walk alone down Congress, because you see people in active psychosis on, along Congress, it's not as bad as it was two years ago, don't you think, right? It is, it is more, it's more cleaned up, but I, I had a, a pretty good walk, I took a different direction, and I'd see it once in a while.
It's still a lot of trouble.
Yeah, and it's just not safe. So, uh, there's, I've got here, Johnny's ambassadors dot, I thought, I, I, it might be dot com, is it order? Okay, okay. Um, they have a really good documentary. Um, it's more about younger people who start using marijuana and what these families are going through, and I just, I want you to consider that. We are always willing to have the discussion, that's what Eagle Forum is, we do research like nobody's business on these issues, and we say, you know, is this good for our country? Is it good for our nation? Is it good for our state? Or is it, are there more problems than it's worth? This one is too expensive, it's too dangerous, and, and we, you know, we don't want this for people, we don't want PTSD victims to believe that this small numbing that they get while they're using isn't hurting your brain. Can we go another slide? Um, so marijuana is THC, cannabis is THC, and hemp dried THC is THC, it is all the same. It is a psychoactive drug, it is addicting, it is intoxicating, and users may, thirty percent of young people who use it, become very addicted, they cannot go without it, which is why we're hearing from people, representatives will tell you, I'm getting so many calls, they are the users. We're not calling, we're not calling to say, I don't wanna be killed by a marijuana, you know, uh, high driver, I don't want somebody coming into my home in a psychotic episode, I don't want to pay for their insurance. Um, can you go one more slide? So Dr. Amen, I don't know how many have heard of him or watched his stuff, he does some really cool things on all kinds of brain issues. He's also so well-known, and he's in California, he helps Hollywood people who are like, what have I done to myself, you know, I need help, he helps them. Um, he takes images of brains, um, this is not healthy, it's not a healthy brain. Um, it's a short-term fix that does long-term damage. People who, I, I've got a young, younger woman, probably thirty-two, who I know, who told me, you know, I tried it a couple of years ago, because friends were just using it, and I got nervous, I got panicked, and, uh, and she decided never to use it again, and thank goodness, because I would say that's an indication that she's getting close, you know, that, that in one use, you know, she was kinda close to some damage to her, her brain with it, and that she was more susceptible maybe to it, but some people use for years and years and years before it becomes a problem for them. Um, can we go again? This is what we do not want in Texas. We care about babies, we care about the unborn, look at these numbers, twenty seventeen, two hundred and seven reported cases of children under six getting poisoned by things they were usually eating in a parent's home. That was when six, almost seventy, let's just say seventy million people in our nation had the ability to go buy recreational marijuana, which if we don't pass Senate Bill Five or one just like it, in another special session, we become one of those states that you can go in and get as much as you want, because it's dosed at maximum fifteen, but they're in big bottles. Um, chocolate bars, chocolate bars will say, you know, the hundred and fifty milligrams of marijuana in it, one little piece, like if you think about, you're doing a Hershey bar and you're breaking it off, a serving is a third of one of those little pieces. Who stops at that? What child would stop at that? An adult who doesn't read the packaging wouldn't stop, you know, a third of one of the pieces. But look what happened, we doubled, in four years, the amount of people who could just go buy THC doubled it. Look what happened, how many children got poisoned by it? That's a huge number in a, you know, industry that's like, we keep it safe in children, we do child, you know, friendly pack, uh, child resistant packaging, um, you know, we do all these good things, what you do is you make money off of raping people and hurting people. Um, so we, we, this Eagle Forum can't, can't be silent on this, and I'm not, and we do have some people quit our list, because, you know, we, they, they say this isn't liberty, but it is not liberty to do this to your society. Twenty-four states haven't legalized right now, we don't have to be the twenty-fifth, we don't. We could be a state that just says, no way, Texas is better than this, Texas doesn't do this, and that's what we hope. The bill does lower criminal penalties, so it gives really a one, two, three, you know, chance of, of, okay, you know, you had some, you had some of this stuff on you, you brought it from overstate, not supposed to be, you know, out of state, you're not supposed to do that, but let's talk to you about what this could do to you, let's, you know, okay, that's good. I would also say that, um, if you, if you regulate it, you are legalizing it, they cannot regulate it, so please, I'm gonna skip the information and go to the regulation versus, skip that one, okay? Texas law enforcement, all of them say, we cannot enforce regulations, we can't do it. Um, anybody can say anything about the package size they have, how much, you know, they took, there's no laws on how much you can take if we're selling it like that. Um, Texas is not funding or enforcing regulation now, that's why we have the problems that we have now. Uh, police right now can't really, if they pull somebody over, they can get a lawsuit that says, you don't know what I was impaired by, you don't know if it was Colorado marijuana or if it was, uh, something from Texas and from hemp. So, so, because the hemp is, is effectively legal right now through a loophole in the farm bill. Um, THC, let's see, oh, okay, twenty-two percent in a legalized state, all age users, twenty-two percent end up with basically what you would call addiction. Um, twenty-five percent when you just have medical, which we have. Um, medical always leads to legalization, we did expand our medicals, so the people who are telling you, I have to have it, can get it. They can go to this program called our two cup program, they can go get it, they don't wanna get it because the dose is limited. So what is it that they really want? They really want enough to be high all the time. Uh, it doesn't, it, it actually, if I had it, if I had the dosage that they're allowed to give maximum, I would be beyond high all the time. Um, you know, it is plenty of THC. It is smaller government for government to say, nope, not here, and enforce the law than it is to try to regulate eight hundred stores, how many stores? There's gas stations, there's everything else. So I want you all, I want you to consider that, I think we, the people, have more liberties when we have less crime, uh, when we have less just general public danger of your house being broken into by some crazy, less taxes, and less, less, when we don't have to be responsible for others via the government's taking from us, I think that's the one, you do your work and you work hard, and bring home income, and, uh, you know, try to support your family, you know, watch your dollars, and the government will take more and more and more to fix the problems that this creates. Homelessness will increase, you skip one, uh, public assistance will increase, insurance costs will increase, fatal accidents will increase, violence will increase, mental illness will increase, liability of law, inability of law enforcement to enforce the law will grow, danger for law enforcement. Right now, they can search a car so often in a search, there's an illegal gun when there's drugs involved. Now they have a hard time, marijuana is their clue, they have a hard time. They also use, if they don't have full evidence, they know this guy, they know he's a habitual criminal, they don't have enough evidence to charge him for this, when they could charge him for a marijuana crime, they could at least get him off the streets for a while. This takes all of that ability for them away. Uh, not many people are actually in jail. The jails in our further out rural counties, what they're filled with sheriffs will tell you are people in psychosis or, or who, you know, are so dangerous, because, because they, they can't let them out until they're done, and they can take a long time. Um, so we'll have more drug and alcohol, uh, I think we will have more suicide, we will have more suicide, they are finding the connection to suicide, there are so many, there's a website called Every Brain Matters, and you can get down deep in there, and you see parents will post their son's, uh, it is not all these boys, but suicide note, I'm sorry, Mom, marijuana has stolen my life, I can't take it anymore. Um, you know, I'm sorry, the, the shooter in New York wrote, wrote sorry, Mom, uh, letters, so IQs go down with marijuana use, that can, that can restore. So, I, that's, that's what I have on that, I hope you all will consider, people take surveys and they're just like, yeah, you know, I don't know, I don't use it, I don't care. Um, we, we want to help you decide to care, um, about what's happening in your community. So, um, Ten Commandments, let's go, I'll do, one more. Yeah, this is fun. So, uh, Texas passed a law that allows the Ten Commandments to be posted in our schools.
A law on them.
Yeah, yes, they're back. But, but, um, Arkansas did the same thing, there was a lawsuit in Arkansas because their bill was effective as of August fifth. Of course, a judge ruled, oh, no, this can't hang. We, uh, but only, it only affected four schools, so thank goodness for that. We have a couple lawsuits, one has the ACL view in it, that one would impact all schools. Uh, our law becomes effective September first. There are school districts that are asking for Ten Commandments. I've got some Eagles in some more rural areas who called me and said, hey, you know, my school asked me if I can help them get the Ten Commandments. So, that's a praise God thing, that we have some people leaving some of our schools who want this, but you can go to storeamericanschools.com, and you can sign up for one school, a district, but you do it by schools, you put in your zip code, and they will send you, they, they charge you a dollar a piece, but I can give Betty, uh, wonderful Betty, a code, a discount code, that would pay the fee for you, they're a dollar a poster, they send them in boxes of thirty, and, uh, you know, every school you pick, they send thirty for. You don't have to take them to the school, you don't hang them up, you take them to the superintendent of the school. So it's a different kind of program than the In God We Trust, but they're supposed to go into every single classroom. Um, if you do it, like I, I just received two schools for the Dallas ISD. I'm expecting to be turned down, um, by the superintendent, because they will say, well, until the lawsuits are done. So that's why I only took schools, because I can feel out, you know, what their temperature is, but I only have to store two boxes, and they're, they're just about this big, so they're not bad. They come with talking points and instructions to help you, but, um, it is a wonderful program, and, and it helps get us involved with the schools. So, um, if you choose to do it, if you would scroll down the How Did I Hear From This? and choose Texas Eagle Forum, we would appreciate that, so that they know that we're talking about it and working it, but I'll tell you, Patriot Mobile is, is mostly behind the paying for, for these and like scholarshiping them. So, so we're excited about that, I hope you will be, I think we will get better behavior in school with God's Word on the wall, but it also leans toward our history, who are we as a people? Oh, we're a moral people, you know, who followed this, this was in our schools until, really, in some schools till the seventies, but until the sixties in almost every school, and so it's, it's a good thing to get them back, and it passed, uh, pretty easily. So anyway, we are excited about that. Uh, bottom line, thank you for being here. Betty has been an Eagle Forum rock star for so long, and I have been blessed to know her, and you guys are blessed here, you've got great leadership here, and I, we just, we really appreciate you. What we exist to do is to just help you learn about issues, we don't try to force our opinion on you, we don't get mad at people who disagree with us on something, but know that we've done hours and hours. I, on marijuana, I've probably done five hundred to a thousand hours of reading and studying and talking and, um, watching, and, uh, just to understand, you know, what this does to people, because it hit my family, it hit my family a long time ago. Um, so I've done that, but the, the more you know, you help other people engage, when somebody asks you a question and you have the answer, then they trust you when they ask you who to vote for. Uh, you know, they know that you're involved in political issues. Um, as you're talking about issues with people, and you find one that you're really hot on, and you discuss it with somebody else, you find out they agree with you, when it's time to make a phone call to your representative, to your senator, um, you can ask them to join you and make a phone call. And probably, I don't know what percent of people weigh in on things, there, when we were doing, trying to do it in asking books and libraries, a lot of people weighed in, trying to stop the transgender and succeeding, finally, destruction of children's bodies, um, that one, over ten thousand people weighed in on the House thing, plus a hundred testified, um, but some things don't have that much, so you might be, you and your friend might be, you know, three of ten calls that your rep gets, and ten calls can make a difference, especially if they're not hearing from the other side, but if they are, they need to hear from you. So, uh, we work to time our alerts, that's why we're up in the middle of the night sometimes, to be the right time to call. There are people who get hot on an issue and they're like, we gotta go do this, there's not a bill yet, you know, there's not, you're wasting your time, you're wasting your rep's time, you know, unless you've got language to present your rep and ask them, you know, would you file this? There's nothing happening at the time, you've gotta have a bill assigned to a committee that's probably gonna get a hearing, or that you want to get a hearing, and we start either pushing these hearings, sometimes we have to push assignment, assign this bill, so that it can be heard, but they need to feel the pressure, and I'll tell you, politicians do feel pressure when it's from the people, because you're the ones voting for them, and they know you're active and they know you're involved. So, um, we want you to be the people, and it just helps, the more you know and the more you'll do, um, you know, it's, we can say we the people, but, but other people are controlling everything unless we become the people and make our voices heard. So, um, that's all I've got, I thank you for having me, um, and I, I can do questions if you have time. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, was I, was I so clear? Anybody wanna discuss anything, or?
Well, you said Dallas is waking up on Islamic faith. What are they doing?
Well, we've got one church that actually like put out a source for learning and things. They put out our torch, which is out there, which is on Islam. That was our last torch. We don't publish in the summer except for cars. They're outside, okay. So we've got those and, I mean, there's nothing else. And, uh, they, they go to their city council meetings and they say, "What are you doing? You know, you can't okay this." There was a bill passed and I think it was either 4011 or 4211. I think it was 4211. It was Candy Noble in the House. And they took away the ability for these groups to lock you into a kind of a covenant for buying in their neighborhood that doesn't let you sell your home to who you choose or that makes you follow particular rules. Now, if you know much about Islam, you know they have the right to lie to further their religion toward worldwide domination. So I, you know, I don't know how effective that is because true, you know, true die in the wool Islamists are going to be following Sharia law and they're going to do that. We did, we did have to kill and people helped us make phone calls. And I know we got a lot in from Dallas. There was a fake religious freedom bill. I think you sent that out, Lisa. But it, it was saying, "We're going to have this commission with the governor and we're going to have seven people on it. One Christian, one Jewish, one Islam and one follower of Hinduism. And then three more. Four will make the forum and we're going to advise the governor." One, you know, like us as a committee actually advising the governor. And who's picking these people? They, oh, they have to be a leader in their community. So I'm sorry, a leader in Islam is an actual world dominus, it's no America, Islamist. That's who is going to be on that committee whether the governor knows it or not. But they were to advise on the practices and whether they're really getting religious freedom. But are they being stopped from practicing? Yes, if we tell you, "You can't do your prayer calls at 5:00 AM and five times a day," then they would say that their, their religious freedom is being violated. And so, so we're getting people more educated on that and getting them to, to catch what their own area is doing. Our reps were really good. Mary Lynn Burschenschneider is National Eagle Forum and she works this issue with the Capitol. And she handed out early on all the resolutions and stuff so that they could work against those.
Why would we stop making people assimilate into our nation?
It was, it happened, I believe sometime in the 70s and I forget what the history on that was. It was after the Vietnamese war was over. We, my family took three Vietnamese refugees from the last plane. My mom fought, I was like 12. My mom thought we were going to get a family, but we got the bodyguard to the general, the aide to camp, to I guess the general or the president. And we got a guy from China whose family owned a soy sauce factory and he was a professor. They would have all been killed because Vietnam was falling and it was the last plane. We were in charge of them. If they would have, you know, done something bad, that would have been our fault. We were to assimilate them. One of them is a college professor now in the SIB system, very Americanized. One was, one kind of disappeared. The bodyguard owned a store in LA, like a 7-Eleven. His first daughter, his name's Cindy, C-I-N-D-I, you know, like me. He speaks good English now. He didn't know any English. He was young. He was the driver and bodyguard. He would build, he would take all our red Legos and build barracks. That was the first English word that he used with us. But, but we were required to be responsible. We got, they lived in our basement until we got them a house to live in, rented them a house. Got Shin a driver's license. My dad taught him to drive in America because it's different than when you drive a general around. So he was not really a great driver. Got, helped get them jobs, helped them learn the language. We got them to church. You know, we did everything we could to help them assimilate. Those rules are just all gone. There's no requirement, there's no sponsorship for, that's real. So that then, I don't know if that was a good thing to do or not. You know, my parents thought it was a good thing and it was a good experience for us. But, you know, but, but it worked a whole lot better than what they're doing now. And it's a shame. It's a shame that we don't do that.
No, Cindy, I definitely, we're trying to make it right.
You do it, okay.
Does Eagle Forum have any stand on any of these particular constitutional amendments that are going to be on the recent ballot?
I, I was going to mention those. We are not going to like a lot of them. We don't like when they take off budget money and they put it into a newly created fund. Now it's off budget. For some of them, like we did water two years ago. It passed. Now in our regular budget, they're adding more to it. Now that it's established, they can keep funding it in the regular budget. It is not a one and done when those pass. So we watch those closely. I have a father with Alzheimer's. I testified against, it was either HB5 or SB5, but it was the dementia one. Because the people who came and testified that had out of the box ideas and some of them were things that they were showing worked. A lot of what is being done now doesn't work. We cycled my dad through some of those medicines and just took them off. When you read what the medicines can do to you, it's like, "Oh, Alzheimer's symptoms. Alzheimer's symptoms, Alzheimer's symptoms." So we took, we took them off. Why are we putting this stuff in his body at great cost for them to do nothing for him? So, so to me, industry that has good ideas usually can work to get them done. The thing I did, because I do research, is I looked at a program that we passed several years ago. And it was the same three or five billion dollars, I guess billion, two, maybe million, whatever it was, it was, it was to cancer. And Texas is going to cure cancer. Okay, what is government really, really good at?
Nothing.
Like what, Liz? Come on. But they're going to cure cancer. Now they're going to cure dementia. I get the emotion of it, but I don't get the taking our money and, and putting it in a special fund. I looked at what do they do with that money? They make a committee and they give out grants. So I looked at some of the grants and I found on cancer, they gave almost $50,000 to a group that was going to go into LGBTQ centers that have a predominant amount of transgender people using their services to help them learn to stop smoking. And that was $50,000 of your dollars that went to pay the salaries of three people to go train people to help transgender people stop smoking or at least cut back. Another one was to get children vaccinated and most of them were Fort Worth schools with the HPV vaccine. They got almost $500,000. Their, their goal was to vaccinate, I think it was about 7,000 people, whatever it was. I did the math. It was over $300 per successful vaccination. Plus selling the vaccination, you know, the, the company selling the vaccination sold that many additional vaccines. But they even talk about in there, "We're going to target 18-year-old girls who can make the choice themselves without their parents at a public school. And we're going to, we're going to try to get the people who've been resistant to get the vaccine." So, you know, is that your money well spent? Is that where you want your money to go? To convince people to take a vaccine they have chosen not to take? Like that's a hard no for me. So I tried to bring that up in committee and I got slapped down by the chair. That's not relevant to this bill. And so I did, I, I took another stab. I said, "You're setting up the exact same kind of committee." I think it is relevant to look at how they dole out our money. And so I was able to get some of my testimony in. But, you know, it's just, it's hard. Once, and once they have these, they continue on. That cancer fund has grown to a lot of money. There are grants that it gets and, you know, maybe it's doing some good. But they feed it and they start it with our money. When there are grants out there, why don't they just go get some grants? You know, and start it with that. So that's our take on most of them. There are some in there that I, I recall, you know, might be, we will put something out probably later fall than a couple months, month before the election and when the voting starts.
Well, you ask, you ask the question, "What's government good at?" Government's good at the definition of insanity. Doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results.
Good, yeah. Good at that.
Question, sorry, Epic State.
Epic State, yeah. That's up by us.
Where are we at?
You know, Abbott says it's done, it's closed. I do not believe it's done, it's closed. There are more land purchases up there that other people are dealing with. So we don't, I, I would say, I'm, I'm not informed on where it is exactly now. But I know their goal is, is more of this. This is their goal, to not assimilate and to protect themselves and to do their own laws to normalize Islam in our country. My goal is to figure out how we get our government to say Islam and some of Sharia law, I mean Sharia law is a different kind of government. It is not compatible with our constitution. So it should not get protection under religious freedom. Now they embed Islam in there as a religion to get those protections. But they are totalitarian, demanding there is no escaping, you know, if you break one of their rules. And hard on women, hard on children in the situation of a divorce and not compatible with our government. They require full compliance to everything that Muhammad did, everything that is in the Quran or the Siira or the, whatever the other books are called.
So it sounds like it's been Abbott has put a stop to it.
He says he put a stop to it. 4211, House School 4211, probably did the most like current. I don't know what, I, I did not, I am reading that going, you know, I don't know how you stop this because you've got additional purchases of land. Look what happened at Colony Ridge and how, how big that is and how long that existed before anybody even really spoke up or not.
This is the business of Michigan. Dearborn, Michigan, unbelievable. The primary, and you just drew me out of my base.
Yeah, yeah. I even noticed like where I live in Dallas, more and more homes, they're being built in the more modern style. But a lot of them have the full walls around them, just like a compound in a, in an Islamic country. You know, it's their, it's their building style. They're trying to get it to be assimilated and us to just be like, "Wow." You know, that, that's what, so I, I value Dr. Tom Oliverson, Rep. Oliverson. He does a lot of good bills. But he had two and part of it's because he has, part of his district is Islamic. And he abuts Wajahidi's district. So, so he also had an insurance bill. And churches, for our pastor over there, churches are saying, "Insurance has become very expensive for us and we need a remedy. We would like to do the, like the healthcare insurance that you could buy into a group and you self-fund." The problem is doing so is absolutely Sharia compliant. That is how they are supposed to do their insurance, is self-insurance. So it, it all of a sudden rushed through the house. We were watching it and then all of a sudden it came up and it went out. And it got to the Senate and we did some work behind the scenes to get that thing killed. Because we understand insurance is high now, but it may not be high forever. And what do we sacrifice? We invite more. The more compliant our laws are to Sharia law, the more is going to come to Texas. And I don't think, I don't think most of us want that. You can, you know, I mean, we know people who are Islamic. If they're not living it, they're going to be in more danger than we are in danger if Islam really starts rising here. They go first to their own and they say, "Why aren't you complying? Why aren't you deemed about? Why aren't you following full-on Sharia law?" And if they don't, they risk death. We come after them. We're not first. So when you really read the, the laws that they follow, those friends of yours are in more danger than you're in. And so do we even want to protect them? Yeah, okay. You know, let's protect the ones that aren't interested in following Islam full-on by not helping the big governmental Islam rise here. It'd be better if, you know, we just didn't support, you know, any of it here.
As far as the lawsuit, I believe it was Louisiana held, had, had a, pretty much Ten Commandments in every platform. And I believe the courts ruled, the only problem with the law was that it was being funded by taxpayer money, which means they didn't address if people donated. Now there's another group locally that will supply Ten Commandments in schools for $10 each. Now, the Ten Commandments, there were two versions that were submitted. One was correct and the one that was incorrect that passed. And what I mean by that is the one that got passed is "Thou shalt not kill." It caused a lot of problems for me and my wife and others, which goes to what was originally written, "Thou shalt not murder."
Thou shall not murder.
Murder.
Oh.
And one of the versions that was in our legislation was "Thou shalt not murder" was in there. That's not the one that got passed.
The reason they, you know why they did the version that they did is because that is what stands on our Capitol House. It's the one, it's the version that's there and that's already been allowed by law to stay. So that's why they aced it on that. I appreciate that background of knowledge. I did not know that. I've not heard anybody testify that. So, so I, I appreciate understanding that. And it's a, it's a good conversation, it's a conversation you can have while you know the original version is murder. And that's very different than punishing a Capitol crime. Yeah, it is very, it is different. I understand your point.
Do you have any idea what's going on with that Islamic thing? Which, which group in Collin County?
That's what he was asking about. It's called Epic, E-P-I-C. It's the East Plano Islamic Center, yeah. And it's, it's, we, I, I don't pretend to know. People have gone out there. I have heard reports, I have not gone out there myself, that they're building, they haven't even broken ground and that, you know, it's closed. I mean, we, we hear everything. So that the Islamic center does exist and I don't even know if it's there or not. They've been in, they are full-on embedded in Richardson and then Plano, which is north and west of, of Richardson. So, so they've been there, they've been in that, embedded. There are some communities up there that have already existed that have their prayer walks in them and, and stations where they stop and pray, whatever. And there's one like that in Irving. But we know other people who have land that abuts to land that they now know is also owned by Islam or an Islamic center. I mean, it is a definite push. I, we hope they're pushing too hard, too fast and it will keep, you know, that people will, will wake up because it does seem very sudden to be so aggressive. They usually work slowly. Black Lives Matter protests, when those were happening, Islam would be on the stage behind them. And, and when they left, they'd be like, "Oh, we, we're victims too. We're victims, you know, people have Islamophobia, we're victims." And they were trying to make their case. That's why they're partnering with the church on the insurance issue to get their type insurance allowed for religious institutions and nonprofits so that more can come and be Sharia compliant. But they're being victims of insurance just like the church. And, you know, that's a problem. They, they come, they come in to be a victim of the same thing you're a big group of. I don't even understand what you're saying.
I'm just gonna say, this, Christians, we wanna just love everybody and think they're all, they're all good inside and I, they all feel that way. I just figured, truth, okay, yes, yes, well, anyway, this conversation is great, because I have two very close friends and they all were very close friends with a Muslim friend. They, and so they said, after they've been friends for so long, they're very different from my personal life, so I'm not gonna hear this. They were shocked because one of them, who was our two friends, said to his friend, "Well, you know, your Imam says, you know, you were killing." And he said, "No, that doesn't take that." So he went and showed his friends the word, and the guy said, "Whoa, hey." Well, my friend said, "Well, if your Imam told you to kill him, would you do it?" The answer was, he said, "Yes, I would."
Oh, he was honest?
Two friends, two very good friends. This is happening. Just so that we know.
Okay, and I'll tell you, we, we put our money where our mouth is. I don't love the idea of refugees necessarily, you know, escaping and coming to our country, so we donate to a Jesus-focused ministry, helping people in refugee camps because they're staying one country away from their home country. They get to keep their language, they get to keep their food, you know, they get all the same thing and they have hope to go back to their country. Most of them, that's why some don't assimilate, they love their country, they wanna be in their country. So we try to do that. So on the Islamic issue, and that is a lot of Islamic people come to Jesus through this ministry that helps them with micro loans and a savings account, earn some money that if they do get to go back to their country, they can take it with them, but they also have some entrepreneurial skills and it might be sewing and they end up with a sewing machine and they're making clothes. It might be farming, it might be animals, but, but there's a group in, in the Dallas area called I Hope Ministries, a little I Hope Ministry, and they actually, he was abused and like captured, I don't remember the whole story, and abused by Islamists when, in his home country. He became a believer, older in life, and God taught him to have a heart for the Islamic and to try to introduce them to Jesus. So they mainly work with women, but they have studies that help you learn how to talk to Islamists. One thing, for those of you who know Jesus, one thing that I said to a guy who came to one of our meetings and was mad because we had the article that's out there on Islam, he said, "You can't write this, you can't say this, this isn't true." And I said, "You know, we can because we are free to print that, you know, number one, we can. Number two, it's well researched and we know it is true." Sorry if you disagree on choice of one word, but I'm gonna tell you the difference between us and the difference, but he tried to say he was just like us and we have the same God. He said, "My God loves me. I have a personal relationship with my God. You do not. Your God does not love you and you do not have a relationship. You can't go to Him, you can't talk to Him." You know, it is not this God. And, and that kinda ended the conversation, but I thought, "Who knows? Who knows if he'll think about that? My God doesn't love me because he's gonna find it to be true." And I have joy of a God who does love me. So I learned that from them without even taking the class, but so there's, there's things that can help, help you do that. Can I show you things I brought? For people who don't believe that we have bad products in the stores that are selling this stuff, a Dr. Rosheim out of Fort Worth, he's with the University of North Texas, he did a study where he went into Houston stores. I know y'all love Houston. When I try to tell our Texas Right to Life, you know, has tickets for y'all to go, "Say, we're not going to Houston." You know, we say, "I'm not going to Houston." Well, he, he went in and he looked at products, he shopped for about an hour and a half in the three biggest chains in several of their stores. He looked up, he checked who they carded me, he looked up the products that they had, he bought product, he was given free samples, stronger than the things he bought. He was, he found they sell, say, urine with a prosthetic in case you have to donate the urine for the test in front of somebody in a warmer that goes in your pocket, ways to cheat. If you've ever worked in a factory, you do not want somebody hide working a machine by you because they can get you killed or themselves killed. They can break, break you down for two days, you know, it's, it's a lot of danger with people working, driving, you know, all kinds of things. This is an amazing, this is just a summary, he's got a code here. I only have eight of these, so if you're not gonna read it, don't take it. And then this is just some of the problems that marijuana intoxication do for people, so I've got more of this one. So I'm happy for y'all to take those. Anything else? Microphone guy?